I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a motion to approve the agenda. We're here a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those same sign. Motion carries. Uh, Michelle, can you hear us? I see you're on Zoom.
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're coming in good.
Great.
Okay, so, uh, first up is informational items, um, winter break hours.
It's just there for you. Um, the winter break hours for the office staff, we've publicized it to the public and so forth. It just basically for you know where people are and when they're. Nothing more than that.
Okay. Great.
And what their legal holidays are and.
Oh.
So their contract that they negotiated, I don't know, a long time ago says that they can leave at noon if they have vacation time. Or comp time that can be used up. Um, and so that's what we publicize. Many of them work because they haven't earned that time, but that's what we publicize to the public just so we are guaranteed to be there during those hours.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? There are none. We'll move on to, uh, Cameron Holt's presentation of the. ASHA, and I don't remember what that stands for. Um, convention. Okay, thank you. Uh, you're gonna give a presentation on the convention you went to, so I appreciate you doing that.
It was very kind. Uh, I was able to attend one hour sessions, posters and vendors. Um, afterwards, you are also granted the full access of the posters online and the talks online as well. Um, some of the highlights from the talks were, um, the I in the individualized plan in the IEP. Uh, moving towards more of an inclusive model. Um, trying to push more special education students into the general education curriculum. And seeing how, um, that would work and having the students have more of like a sense of belonging in the general education classroom. Um, and then they were discussing how autism spectrum is now called autism spectrum conditions, not disorders. Which is, um, different than what it's been called in the past years. And that there's lots of new research with autism, um, with misdiagnosing females or oftentimes, um. Um, um, diagnosing them as a different disorder. And then later on in life, they find that they have autism. And then at the vendors, I received a lot of free therapy tools and, um, information. I was able to receive a giant AAC board, which is the og- uh, the alternative. Augmitive Communication Board. So that's, um, what you see on iPads. Oftentimes it's the different icons and then the words under the icon. So kids with autism, um, who are nonverbal can use those iPads. And, um, I also shared with the developmental preschool, some chewy tubes that I picked up at the vendors.
What was the word?
And chewy tubes. Chewy tubes help, um, with like feeding and swallowing with kids with Down syndrome and other disorders. So that was great. And then overall, I just learned more about techniques and assessments in our field. And more research about autism in the inclusion model. For any questions?
Any questions?
I don't have a question about the conference, but I'm like, um, I can't remember if we talked about it before Karen, with kids with autism disorder. Do you pair them or put them together to do parallel play like during speech time and kind of work that out?
Yeah, so it's, um, parallel play and then also, um, trying to, um. Help the guide the students in communicating with each other, whether that be babbling or if it's words. Or if it's, um, them using different toys and materials and playing together. Um, that's, you know, that's what it is. Yeah, it just depends. Every kid's different on the spectrum.
So what are you doing differently because of what you learned?
Um, I think just more of, um. Inclusive, inclusive model and just trying to see like. And working with the IEP team and seeing is there a way that we can push some more of these high skill students? In the general education curriculum, even if it's just during PE or if it's during music, just exposing them to the general education peers. I find, um, when the developmental preschool had the kids go out to work with the general education peers out in the recess time. Um, our kid who's nonverbal said words. I mean, it was just amazing to see that, uh, as a speech language pathologist, that's the goal. And so it was really nice. Yeah.
Great. Any other questions for Cameron? Michelle? There you go.
Nope, nothing for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Cameron, for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Yeah, have a Merry Christmas. Uh, next up is discussion items. Uh, number one would be community engagement board attendance.
Ashley, do you have your PowerPoint?
That one's, nope, the other one. On the. You can go ahead and start and we'll catch up with the PowerPoint in just a second.
Okay, well, I'm Jenny Andrews and I am the secretary for the, um, Proster Thrive Coalition. And this is Genesis. Want to introduce yourself now?
So I'm Genesis and I'm, um, so Genesis is professional here at the high school.
Um, back in two thousand eighteen, Mr. Funk came to the coalition to reach out looking for support to create the community education board for our school district. Um, Haley Green and Mr. Funk took the initial initiative to create the board and, uh, provide funding under one of our grants. Um. What is the community engagement board? What's formed in compliance? I'm sorry, I, uh, I'm going to be needing to rely on my slides a little bit.
I'll add it, but I can.
It's coming.
Okay.
There we go.
All right.
Nope.
So we are, I guess, on number two, I think. Uh, so we're formed in compliance with, uh, two thousand eighteen change to the RC.
Go back one.
W. Uh, and you know, that's, that's the reference point, but it's in regard to school attendance, um, section of the code. Uh, the primary focus is, um, for the board to create a trained group of community members who will support at-risk youth. And will know local resources for treatment, services and programs available to support student attendance. Um, next, this board is made up of, um, a well-rounded representative, uh, group in our community from parents, the medical community, the migrant pack. Counselors, building representatives from each school and administration. Let's see, um. Yes, here we go. At the start of, uh. Sorry. At the start of term two of this school year, uh, the school began implementing a more value-added system of attendance tracking. There are five benchmarks that'll trigger, um, a letter home to update guardians of attendance status. Important benchmarks are missing seven or more days within a single month. Or fifteen or more unexcused absences in a school year. These are indications for a referral to the community engagement board. So what is the truancy process? Um, the student is going to be identified and that's through their attendance. And then the school's job is to make the initial contact and work to open up the communication for and the reason for the, um. Missing school. But if that doesn't work, then they're going to reach out to the community engagement board and make a referral. And we have a partner, Natalie Aguilar with the Juvenile Justice Center, who, um, coordinates contact between our district and the, um, true student and or the parents, depending on. The age and the school and the circumstances. Um, we'll meet with that student or. And try to resolve the issue within our community because we know our own resources best and how to support those students. Um, and we create a plan with measurable goals and expectations. And if they agree to that plan, then we will stay their petition. Um, and as long as they are meeting those goals that we've created, then the petition will be stayed and that it's resolved. And if they aren't able to, then the next, um, the next action would be to refer them onto juvenile justice and, um, let them take it from there. But, um. But we want to resolve it here, obviously, because like I said, we know our resource is the best and that's the whole point of having it, um, resolved within the community. Thanks. Um, so why is attendance so important? Um. I have this summary from the attendance dot, um, attendance works dot org website. Chronic absence is easily masked by school attendance statistics. Even when an average daily attendance appears relatively high. Suppose, for example, a school has two hundred students and an average daily attendance rate of ninety-five percent. At this rate, ten students are absent on any given day while a hundred ninety are present. But it is possible that ten students missing each day, um, occurs, uh. That the ten students missing each day occur because the school is serving sixty students who are taking turns being absent. And, uh, end up missing a month or more of school each over the course of the year. But even, but we can still show that it's a ninety-five percent daily attendance rate. Thirty percent of the student population could be chronically absent. So, um, missing two days per, uh, month equates to about ten percent of the school year and missing two days. Over a student's career will equate to over a year of missed education. Um, poor attendance can lead, can influence a student's reading proficiency by third grade and is a leading indicator that a student will drop out of high school. So, um, I know at the last board meeting, we talked a lot about, um, how we can raise our expectations of students, how we can promote grades and things like that and getting the kids in the seats. Is the foundation for all of it. So. We're looking for buy-in from our stakeholders and of course, our, um, school board is among those, so.
Yes, so we have been meeting, um, about every two weeks. Um, with a group of individuals that were on the previous slides on how we can do this. And so we've come up with several things, um, brainstorm many different things on how we can mitigate this, the chronic absences. And next slide please. Um, so what we have planned is to increase the awareness within our community. So get everybody involved, whether that's, um, business owners downtown, um, school board, different, um, support groups. Systems within each individual building, teacher, staff, administrators, just so we all have. The, the, the same goal to increase this attendance. Um, and then also, next slide. Um, how we are doing this is we have a plan to recognize the good attendance. Those students who are. Increasing, improving their attendance are here all the time. Um, we, I don't know if you guys have seen, we have been able to put around. I don't know if all schools have them yet, but they do. Okay, so it's, uh, the attend today, achieve tomorrow banners, just to kind of bring awareness to all the parents. Um, and the students as well. Um, monitoring, informing the parents of the attendance concerns depending on each individual student. And then also, uh, we want to gather information from chronically truant students about the reasons why they're not coming to school. And that will give us an idea of what we can do for them here in our district regarding resources to help them with that. And next slide. And so, uh, we also have been working on a survey that is going to be tailored to each individual school. Um, we know that the barriers that sometimes high school students compare to elementary students is different. So we're gonna, we're trying to build a, a survey that we can give, whether it's the student or the parent on why their students are missing. School. Is it because of transportation? Is it academics or bullying? So really getting to know the root cause of why they're not attending school. And that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Would you, um, share with them when we were in our meeting? One of the slides talks about trying to share the positive things that are going on. And we're talking about putting out, um, I call them sandwich boards, um, out along telling us what the daily attendance is. How many students were tardy that day, right? Um, we, I. I really believe that there is this idea, especially as a grandmother of a kindergartner. I'll just give an example. We're talking about kindergarten readiness or whatever. The impact of two days a month on a student who's learning in second grade is, you know, a huge impact. Or you hear a lot of times it's just kindergarten and then they miss all of letter L or something. I don't know, right? There's this idea that the lesser or the younger the student, the less impact it has. And in some ways, it really is almost the opposite. A eleventh grade student can generally work independently and do some homework and whatever they're sick, but. That first grader who's not getting that week of whatever probably is not going to get the same instruction from their parent at home. And they're not able to work independently. And so I think we've got to shift that. I, I don't want to say it's okay when you're eleventh grade to not go to school, but I'm just saying, I think there's this idea that the younger they are, it doesn't matter. They'll, they'll be okay.
Yeah, and then to pair with that too, when you set a precedent for a kindergartner, that school is important. That is something that becomes part of their foundation of education. And so if you set a precedent that it isn't important, what are you saying down the road? So.
Well, and usually when you see kids are chronically absent, say in middle school, if you look back, their attendance wasn't great from when they started school. So they missed a day or two here and there all, you know, throughout the year as kindergartners. And then by the time they were second graders, it was a little bit more. Then by the time they're fifth graders, it's a little bit more. And so, um, it is, a lot of it is really educating those parents early. Yes, kids come to school and their parents bring them to school.
Go ahead, David.
Yeah, and I just wanted to kind of go off what you're saying to add to that. One thing that didn't really come out in the slides, but when we talk about ten percent, uh, absence, two days a month. We're talking any absence. We're not talking unexcused. There's two parts. There's unexcused, which leads to truancy process, but the chronic absence rate is any absence. If you're sick two days a month, that really doesn't seem like a lot. Okay, but two days a month, eighteen days in the school year. Well, now.
Twenty days in a month.
Ten years of school, you've missed a year of school. In that whole timeframe. So that's where that chronic absence really comes into play. And like the answer, they're doing that in middle school. They probably did it all the way through elementary as well. And then it. Tends to sometimes get worse at the high school, but just trying to give people to, to realize that. An absence is an absence. It really doesn't matter why it's an absence and it impacts somewhere along the line. So just. Adding that to what Jenny.
Thank you. Lisa, would you like to ask me if I had unlimited funds? What I'd like to do?
I didn't even realize that was my.
No, I'm just joking. I just. Um, no, some districts have a, uh, an administrative person that this is their sole goal is to, um, look into these things and create the, um. Uh, curriculums around that or whatever the word would be and, um, track the track and they're in charge of their home visits. So, you know, the way we have it set up, it's a little bit harder because people already have full plates. And so when you have to do a home visit. How do you fit it in? And when you have to do ten home visits, how do you fit it in? And so, um, the more support we could get, and I mean, I understand what budgeting, but, uh. You know, the more support that this could get, I think could have a real big impact on our district.
Well, it reminds me of something. I don't know if I watched it on TikTok or Real News and it showed, you know, school administrators that they do, they have, that's their. The designated people that go and talked about, you know, the kids that haven't returned since COVID and you're going to different addresses, finding out the families have moved and trying to find out the new address. And that's their exclusive goal is to try to find these kids and get them back.
So we do have a re-engagement group, which would be that. And then we have the pieces, um. CPS gets involved. If the student's not spending in school, parents have a responsibility to have their child in school, right? There's all, there's so many faceted layers and fingers in amongst that. And then we have, if a student is on an IEP or has, we have a responsibility to serve that student. And educate that student, believe it or not, even if they're not at school. And so how do we do that? And how do we manage that, our. Free and public education responsibility, right? Our FAPE responsibility. So it's really intertwined with all of those pieces, but it starts. Really with me and you guys and setting this idea that it's expected that you're in school every single day. And, and then that's how do we message that to the culture and the community, the culture of our school system and the proster community that. If you can't be, you can't learn if you're not in school.
How far, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, how, like, how far along are you guys in this, like, whole process? I mean, I guess. Are you to the point where principal calls up and you say, hey, Timmy hasn't been here for ten days? Like, I guess, how does this process work? And is it something that's started or ongoing?
Sure. Well, you know, the law changed and then it was COVID and attendance was like a nightmare for, you know, the entire nation, right? And so coming out of that, we definitely struggled to find where, where the attention needs to go, because, um. You know, between all the absences related to illness and people switching around schools and districts, there was a lot of confusion. So I would say. Two years ago was the first year that we really hit the ground with some of these meetings. And, um, we were talking about this beforehand, you know, setting like this, I don't want to really say much about those meetings other than. There were some that were, I think, really valuable, um, to have. And, um. And so I do, I know there's a real value to those meetings, but, um. But again, we need, if we start at that foundation, we're being proactive instead of reactive. So we've kind of got two sides of the coin that we're dealing with.
Joe, do you want to share with what you do when it in regards to attendance at night?
So we, um, I have a great secretary who really does a great job. So she spent, so. My, um, and she actually calls, so they get an automated phone call and she will call every kid and she will make notes. And we, um, just had a situation where we could see the kid, what time they come in for tardiness also, and they'll put their initials. So there's that step one of like trying to make the contact with the parent. Then after so many, they get letters and whatnot, but also then we set up a meeting. And in the past, we skip this step, so we're not very good at it. So that's something new. But we've set up a meeting and my school psychologist gave me a piece of paper that kind of is a, from OSPI, that is a barrier. Um, kind of so that way we can go through with the parent and the student and try to figure out some stuff before we head into the next. Um, we also go on home visits. So my security guard will take my, um, school counselor, I found his home visits, um, but depends on the days that, but. Um, but typically my security guard and, um. My counselor will go on home visits. And then after we've done certain amount of things, then we, um, turn them in to the engagement board and then we meet, then we look forward from there.
Michael, yours is similar? David, close?
Close. We're a lot heavier on trying to get contact with them and that. For twenty-five years, I've dealt with the truancy process and all that. Have that with the core piece of it. Really isn't where the meat of it is. Just really tried to, to increase the contact, getting parents in, getting kids in. And looking at plans for where we go from here, which, so that leads into the Kim's next discussion, but, um. Trying to, trying to get kids here.
So like currently, uh, this might be a legality question, but is, is the board? I guess in a position to where in those situations, sort of the principal and the security guard making home visits. Is the board in a spot where if, if we have community members that are willing to be involved to go make home visits or no?
I don't believe so. It's not their role necessarily. Their role would be to. Um. I, I guess I want to pause on that statement. Let me just tell you why I'm pausing. I think there are still a entity of, of. The district. And so, um, without having a district employ them, I don't know about the liability piece of it. And that's why I said I'm going to push pause on my statement. But yes, the board can say, we need to do a home visit with this and then we can put a team together, go do the home visit. Um, and then we would just go from, from there if they choose. We generally try and send a male and a female. We generally try and send. We never send only one person. We try and reach out. We try to get them to come in first.
Yeah.
So, but. Yeah, most of us do.
Yeah, no, I, that's great. Just the, the security guard and the principal being.
Pretty authoritarian and it's.
Well, no, just like they're away from the school.
Oh, yeah. I mean, most of the time they're in the afternoon evenings.
Okay.
What are fixed to have, what state? Like what adults you feel safe with?
Yeah.
Um, and feel connected with. And so I think that, you know, seeing someone from their, um. And as an elementary, I know these guys probably won't, but as an elementary, I get a lot of.
Yeah.
And so when they, when I'm at their house, like, hey, I miss you. You know, where are you at? Um, it's a different type of relationship or building. So.
No, that, that's, that's great. I think that, I mean, it's also you're taking time to, to do that, um.
Right, let me think that might clarify a little. So the, in this process. We've had a community engagement board that's been used for years and years. We always did that through a contract with Benton County. And when petitions were filed, they would put what they called it, uh, used to be called the truancy board together. And, um, but they used their people, families had to go to Kenno or to, um, Kennewak for the meetings. It was sometimes effective, sometimes not.
Yeah.
And then, then the laws changed a little and they started calling it a community engagement board. Well, they would still. At the time would still service, you know, us with that, but. We were, we're working with Thrive, we're able to try to bring that home so that we could have that board here. And that's sort of, that's where Jenny started getting involved.
Yeah, that's awesome.
More so.
Um, with, with the whole truancy thing, like honestly, is there anything as a district you can do? I mean. Worst case scenario, if a kid honestly, it's probably more high school age, but I mean, if a kid truly doesn't want to be in school.
I think David's right. My next presentation, we're going to talk about graduation alliance and some things. The biggest one was that we were talking about though, is the barrier, the why.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess up until sixteen, seventeen years old. I've been doing this with teen, high school age kids. They really in their heart want to be in school. Something's keeping them from coming to school.
Yeah.
Whether that's mental safety, physical safety, no food, no car, no one to help them get up in the morning. They're up all night, domestic violence. I mean, the list, the barriers are so huge. So. I don't know too many teenagers who would, unless they're exceptionally smart. And I mean that very high, high IQ who say, I just, let me take the test, let me get my diploma and let me move on with life. There's very few who don't want to go to high school. It's a social norm. It's part of our society, right? It's, but there's a barrier. There's something getting there. And the other part is, is it takes a long time to sometimes get to the barrier. Because at first they'll say, oh, I, I can't sleep at night. Well, okay, you can't sleep at night. How come you can't sleep at night? Right? There's all, there's. It's like that onion, right? Until you get to the root of it. So that's where we try and get. Like you said, I call it not the principal and the police walking up to your door, right? Got to get a friendly, like, let me help you.
Absolutely. And that's kind of the goal of having the board be made up of the community is, you know, the chances are somebody's going to be able to relate and then. Um, the way we've created it too with doctors and, um, the migrant pack is involved and some other. Mental health professionals, drug and alcohol professionals, whatever. So.
Yeah. So then we've got kind of a, a wide area of resources that we just have the knowledge for. And I feel like that's what ninety percent of it is, just the communication when you find out.
What that barrier is when you finally get to it, um, and just communicate. A little thing like, man, if your kid needs to go to the Boys and Girls Club after school and that take, you know, that'll solve some of the transportation issues. Let's get Chris on the phone, you know, like, or does the building have this particular thing, um, available? If the kid needs a break in the middle of the day and working those things out and, um, just kind of putting all the cards on the table. You know, is most of the battle.
Do you feel parent engagement is pretty good most of the time or?
I think it depends. I mean.
Is it more of an age thing?
Hmm, since I'm with high school, I feel like probably ninety percent of the time. Students that I've worked with, I feel like if you communicate with the parent and you explain, a lot of times they don't even know. That their students are not even in school because they're a little sneaky sometimes, but, um, once you actually sit down with them and explain to them. Then they will understand and then they will help you to try to get their kids here. But then you have those other ones that will try to kind of excuse their kid on why they're not coming and just kind of enable. But I mean, Mr. Funk can probably add to that too. I think it just depends on, on the student. Yeah.
Well, sometimes when kids aren't coming to school, it's more of a parent issue than a kid.
Yeah, I would say that's a higher percentage K twelve.
Especially when they're young.
Yeah.
Especially when they're young.
Yeah.
By the time they're, you know, in high school, it. Parents are just.
They're lost.
They can't make the push. They don't know what to do.
Well, they might not have made them go to school that much, so when they were little, so it's even harder. Yeah.
They've kind of created the beast. My experience is if you can get them in the door to the meeting. That is a lot of the hurdle right there. The people who are coming, those are the people who are looking for answers and they, and they want to be actively involved in the process. And they and they want to be actively involved in the process.
Are you saying statistically, you're saying that that you guys have done this with Thrive that it has shown su- success or? Is it hard to gauge because of other things in culture, COVID, whatever?
Um, I would say we have, we have two, probably too small of a sample size right now to really know. And then as being a non-district employee myself, I actually don't have access to a lot of the follow-up stuff, cause it's private information. And so it makes it a little bit harder um, to kind of seem like that, maybe that's something we should be talking about, but. Um, I did learn towards the end of last year that I just need to, this district can't, for example, release this parent's phone number to me. So I'll just need to ask in the meeting, can I follow up with you? Just give that to me. You know, there's workarounds. And like I said, the people who come in. They're looking for um, they're looking for help, so.
Well, I think these statistics really neat, the, you know, showing just how two days a month.
Mm-hmm.
How much that can accumulate that that could be really helpful to parents, I would think.
Yeah, I think, and then it's it's same with the ninety-five percent. If a school is boasting ninety-five percent attendance, that sounds fantastic. And if you dig into it, um, it's kind of mind blowing that that could also at the same time be revealing twenty-five percent um. Or what are my statistics? Well, I don't have them memorized, but anyway, there's a, there's enough kids there that are chronically absent, that it's gonna be affecting. You know, the entire district.
This positive reinforcement at the schools and rewarding perfect attendance, does that have an impact? Or when it's like at the elementary schools, for example? Or does it not have an impact? Cause at that level, it's a, it's a parent issue more than it is a student issue?
Um, I don't have, I don't have data, like numbers to tell you. I, what I can tell you is what we hear when. And I was telling Janet this one time, uh, so they're giving attendance, they get their bracelet. And this last time around, they're just getting their five extra minutes of recess. And that has been interrupted by a variety of things, so fourth grade has not gotten that yet. And that is like, when am I getting my recess? When am I getting, you know, like, so they're, they're, they're knowing that, uh, a little girl. Is upset because it is in order to get those five minutes of recess and the bracelet for at Heights. It's either all day, you can't be picked up early and you can't be tardy. That's considered, you know, perfect attendance and a little girl is getting picked up. And she's like, I can't leave, like, and she's arguing with her mom about it now. We're also still not at our ninety percent heart, so is it, you know, is it helping? I don't, I don't know. I think for a couple of kids, absolutely, you know, like. They're having that um. That they like those, those little things that are pretty um, minor and they're easy to.
Are you doing just, are you guys doing, uh, I thought you said this, improvement awards too? Are you, are you doing just like perfect attendance? Are you doing them like in the ward? So I know like how you did like Level Up and. Are you guys doing like Level Up and Attendance?
Have, we have it. That's a good idea. We have it. We are starting in January grade levels. So um, we like competition to heights, that's for us. So we're gonna try to do that, see, see if we can have some kind of peer pressure. Right now it's legalized. Let's see if we can make it into a group. Um, but yeah, but it, I mean, it is. Not, not something really dramatic, but it is a battle to try to get some, a handful of kids to school. It's hard.
The nice thing about if you're doing monthly attendance, then it's so much more achievable. Um, so, you know, creating those more achievable goals for the kids especially.
And I. I'll tell you, um, and I have um, total idea of like five, you know, like five um, absence or less. They, you know, like just some kind of reward or incentive also, you know, um. Kind of that, you know, if you already missed one, why not just continue? Ideas that we're trying with, but that's what we're doing.
Great. Any other questions? Hey, thanks for tonight.
Thanks, guys.
Have a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, you too.
All right, next step is Graduation Alliance.
And this should be pretty quick, but I was asked by the board to see if I could possibly explain Graduation Alliance a little bit better. And how it came about. Um, so just next slide, please. So Graduation Alliance is a company and you're gonna, you'll have this website. I mean, you'll have this PowerPoint, so you can click on the website. It's, we met with Becky McLean from O S P I today um, about our enrollment and our stuff today. It's a huge, huge systematic. Re-engagement, credit retrieval, all different kinds of programs. So they do on-demand solutions, dropout recovery, adult diplomas. Their NCAA approved courses, their alternative education, which we use them for. American Council of Education College, so they have good transcripts that can be used in colleges around. And then then we have the online, private online high schools. Okay, so that's just about them. Next slide, please. So we use them for two different parts. We have an online school at part of Housel Middle School, I think you have a couple, right, Mr. Denny?
Yeah.
And we have Prosser High School. So these students are not successful in a traditional setting. Sometimes are almost always, it's a choice to attend online, maybe medical, maybe life challenges. Um, these, um, sometimes it's not a choice. Somebody is, we have to rep- um, provide every student a public education. But if you're naughty and you're not gonna do what you're supposed to, here's how you get your education from Prosser School District. So sometimes it's a discipline issue. Um, not often, but it is a resource for us to be able to meet the requirements of the, of. Providing the students in Prosser an education, okay? The biggest difference between these two programs is age. Okay, so I just wanna make that. We also use Graduation Alliance as a re-engagement. And that is really not a part of Prosser High School, but it is part of Prosser School District. That's kind of a weird nuance. If for, you remember Prosser Falls, right? So we have Prosser Opportunity Academy. So I'll give you an example. Student A is um, missing a lot of school. We, we go to a community engagement board. This school's not working for them. We take them out of the Prosser High School and we enroll them. In Prosser Opportunity Academy. It's our re-engagement program. This also works if someone drops out and at nineteen wants to come back. Okay, or seventeen and drops out and wants to come back, right?
Or they're on the verge of it, cause they're so credit deficient.
Right. These students must be at least sixteen years old. And um, they have certain qualifications. They have to be such a certain percentage of. Credit deficiency, um, other, there's multiple. And or referred by their school counselor or school principal, right, to the program. This is always done, you know, for it's always, ninety-five percent of the time is done in conjunction with the parent. Right, everyone's like, you'll get somebody over eighteen or something. I don't wanna say always, but it's done as a team decision. It's generally not. Somebody's saying, you know, I'm not gonna come to school anymore. I wanna go do it some other way. In some ways, depending on how you look at it, this would be a version of the old G E D. Okay, now there is still a G E D program, but if you think about what you remember. So-and-so dropped out of school, they were seventeen, did whatever, got in an argument with their parents, moved out, did whatever. They wanna go get their G E D, they would come back to the high school and we would try and put them in Graduation Alliance through this, okay? Now, there is a G E D program over twenty-one. Um, and the other reason it's open door is it really is, our goal is to get them a high school diploma, so they're more employable, right? I mean, opening the doors to the next future versus um, completely being a dropout, right? So we wanna work on that. Um, next slide, please. I wanna talk about this part. We talk about graduation riddle. It really works for some students. There are some students that are amazing at tech and online and their brain just works that way. I don't know if you have. High school or, or excuse me, college students in your family or somebody and online really works for them. And then you may have that student that says. If I have to stare at a screen and do one more research, I'm not, uh, right? So it seems to either really work or not work. It doesn't really seem to be a, yes, for some, you know, it's okay for one. Like amazingly well. Um, it does help our on-time graduation rate for that student. That really just wants to do their schooling online. That person, that student is often got a very strong family support system. They have a good structure and support system. They're still traveling, they're still doing things. They work on the family farm, they have a job, they're, you know, I mean, they're goal driven, right? They wanna just crank out the work and, right? They generally don't struggle academically. They're able to read and do their math and learn, right? Does that make sense? The negative, students don't have face-to-face support. If you don't know how to ask for help, if you don't know how to write questions, if you don't know how to. Um, the other one is sometimes kids think they can do it on their phone. You really cannot do online school on phone. You can't answer math, if you can't, you know, that kind of thing. It does increase isolation. If they don't have that outside support, then they're living in their bedroom twenty-four seven, right? If they don't have that outside piece. Students are not necessarily com- um, completing on time, decreasing the graduation rate. Because they can say they're making progress, but at high school, they're taking. Four or five classes in being successful a trimester, right? And they're doing two, right? So it doesn't, it doesn't, it does help us graduate more, but not necessarily improving our online graduation rate. Next slide, please. The big thing that you need to understand is we, today, we verified and double verified. The one chart on the left, right? We get their F T, their head count and their F T E. And we collect the money and the money goes to Graduation Alliance, okay? We pay them monthly and we call this pass-through money, okay? When we talk about Mrs. Baker's class, which is ninety-five plus percent of, ninety-eight percent of her classes are red comment. That's credit retrieval, that's a different concept. Um, but our Graduation Alliance is our A L E in our program, um, in our school. So that's run by us, managed by us, or the fourteen eighteen is a Prosser Opportunity Academy, if you see those words. Or sometimes you hear fourteen eighteen and that's just what the state calls that particular program. And we call it fourteen eighteen, cause when we're looking for it, we're looking for fourteen eighteen on the computer. I think that's the last one, but will you make sure, Ashley, was there one more? Yeah, I thought so.
The Red Comment, he's, Red, Red Comment is quite a bit less expensive. It's like a hundred and fifty dollars a class, what they're taking to is one seventy-five.
Right.
So it's not a pass, it's not a pastor.
Yeah, that's, that's, so that's why it's not handled differently.
Now, they, they, if there is a one-off class that they're taking at Graduation Alliance, it's not very expensive either, but the full enrollment is pretty, almost their full F T.
For Graduation Alliance, can kids still be at school part-time or are they all?
We do have some kids that are doing some classes.
In part. An example would be.
Band.
Band, P E, um, sometimes an art class.
Maybe they're really connected to like C G E and they wanna be an egg or something like that.
But they don't come and log in at, at the high school or the middle school and do the class?
They're doing a one-off class, they couldn't do, they do, can do it here, but not the, the ones that are.
Full-time, they don't come here. And that's really a management and a safety issue. If, if we have a student in the building, we need to be able to count where they're sitting at. So I want you to think about, like, we don't have earthquakes, but I'll just do something random. We have an earthquake. And our building collapses, we need to know who's physically in the building, so we just can't have you coming in and using the technology if we don't know where you're at.
What's the, the monthly fee that it's paid? Like, what's that based on? Is that based on the head count?
Number of credits, how many kids in the program, it's per student.
Yeah, the more stu- more stu- it's a little bit, we get, it's a little bit less money to them if we have more students, so, but it's like the difference between.
Very expensive, it's almost a four, our full F T.
Yeah, it's, uh, we basically were getting kind of administrative costs we're keeping, so. To pay their bill.
So you.
We have David to manage it. David's like, keep talking, I'm working on it.
No, that's right. I got it here. I'll, I'll, I sent it to him.
Oh.
So I think, you know, and you brought this question up recently, um. We have Graduation Alliance and I knew there was another one, so thanks, and Red Comment. Why do we have multiple programs to achieve the same outcome?
So Red Comment, we, we have con- some control over that. I mean, in the fact that. Mrs. Baker managed the classes, which courses students take, she controls their testing, when they're testing, when they're able to test. Whereas Graduation Alliance controls, follow that. We don't have any control of that. So the kid needs one course and they're coming in to take. English eleven, they're gonna come in and take the course and she's helping and supporting them in their class. So uh, we've been really successful retrieving credits with Red Comment. Um, and Graduation Alliance is really this other program, like kids, for the most part, almost all of it is either kids that are. In that cr- that recovery, trying to graduate, or they're choosing online. Red Comment is not, you're gonna go full-time Red Comment. No, you're gonna take a class.
I think about the student who gets to their junior year and they failed second semester English nine. And they've never made it up and we need to do that to make sure they graduate on time. They can sit in that one class and not take P E, they can take that class.
Through Red Comment.
Through Red Comment.
But why would we not do it through?
Very expensive, very expensive.
Expensive.
And we lose control of that student.
So then my question, why don't we take all of our credit retrieval from. Graduation Alliance and push it to Red Comment?
They don't have a strong enough management program to manage the thousands.
You would have to hire, we'd have to hire a person to be like.
The teacher.
The teacher, like, it wouldn't be like what, we'd have Val still doing, you would have to, you'd have to kind of have your own program, your own teacher.
You have to be a certified teacher, so to, just remember how you sign, like, we hire someone and they're a science teacher. And then we hire an English teacher, we hire a math teacher. If we're managing the program, we have to have the certified teacher. Graduation Alliance has the certified teacher.
And the, another aspect to that, with the re-engagement piece, the majority of. Majority of the students there, we're gonna lose. We're gonna lose.
Cause you're not gonna come here.
They're not going to come into.
Through Red Comment or through Graduation?
If we don't provide that opportunity for online, they're not gonna engage here, so we will lose them anyways. That's why they call it re-engagement, because a lot of those kids will not finish school. But this is a, kind of that last opportunity for them to do it.
And, you know, some districts do kind of, do kind of run their own online program with something like Red Comment, but it would be a much bigger animal than what we're doing. Like that we would have to take on if we're doing that. And like Kim said, you are managing the courses, that means. So like when we, when a kid is going in Red Comment and taking English and math. There's a certified English and math teacher that is their teacher, whereas if Val's running that, Val's only certified in C T E. She's not certified to be the teacher in that. Whereas so that's, that's the other thing, Red Comments, um, Red Comments, she's just managing the program. She's, it's an online class, whereas this is, there's a teacher that they're working for. That's a math teacher, an English teacher, history teacher, whatever that is. They're doing the grading, they're doing all of that, so. It's possible, some districts do that and you could use something.
Red Comment is a small, local Washington State.
Yeah.
Um, program. Um, it's actually ran, one of the biggest part of the programs ran out of Mabton. I mean, not, not Mabton School District, but that's where they live.
It started in.
Toppenish.
Yeah.
And so it just doesn't have the manpower and the resources to do a big volume of.
But it's very successful with, with the way that we're using it right now. It's really successful with kids, we.
Graduation Alliance doesn't work for a one.
And we do do a little with Red Comment of hmm. Like, we could address the Washington State history issue there with kids that need Washington State history. We can, they can take that course. We could, we have in the past, we've had um, where we had kids that took French one and then there was only six kids that wanted to take French two. We're able to provide that French two through Red Comment, so they could get their second year of French. Because we couldn't do a teacher for six, six kids, you know, Brian.
And we're doing that with calculus in a way, but through a different avenue, right?
So if they, if they wanna take calculus, it's a B Y U course.
That's right.
Yeah, a B Y U course, which is um.
Kind of like a college and high school.
It kind of is, but online and uh, and they're doing that, kind of doing that. It's kind of an independent study, basically. And so they might have a time periods they're scheduled into Val's class, just so they have a place, they have a place to be um, during that time. Or even if there's multiple kids doing it, they could be in there together, so they could work together on stuff if they wanted to, but. That's if we have kids, when I have, when we have a student that um, wants to take a course or need to take a course we don't have. Um, I, uh, we, we support that through Title Four. Um, fund so that he can take an A P class we don't offer. Or in calculus class we don't offer, but a lot of times it's A P classes, A P. Got some kids that wanna go in specific sign fields and we don't offer that slot, so we, but they've done a B Y U course.
What's their course catalog for Red Comment?
It's huge.
Big. And there's, they have middle school courses too, honestly. We, we could use them in middle school, we don't, but they do have middle school course catalog. They do have middle school course catalog. Um, I, it's online, I can send it to you.
Sean, did you have a question?
I know.
Okay.
I just.
Or a comment?
Oh.
Oh.
Same line that. You were talking about the different two programs. It's an A L E program and there are a lot of people that goes with that. Graduation Alliance manages all of that for us too. The, the state requires a whole bunch of stuff, meeting with the kids regularly, a whole counseling piece associated with it. It's not just a class. Like, there's a whole program that the state requires and Graduation Alliance takes care of that.
We should have brought that up because that was one of the things Becky McLean from O S P I said today. They manage all that. They check all the boxes, make sure we're in compliance, they give us a report and we're done so that we can still be funded properly.
However.
Graduation.
If they do have. If they do have a way to just provide one-off classes.
Yeah.
They. We need more discussion on that because we're. We need Red Comet right now. And so we're not, we can't do both.
Yeah.
We would have to talk about, okay, if we were gonna switch to Graduation Alliance to provide those one-off recovery classes.
Then it's training Val and training.
More work would have to be done, but they do have that opportunity and it's not A L E, it's a safe class, it would be. But we need somebody to manage.
How much overlap is there?
We hope none.
What do you?
I mean, Red.
Maybe I'm missing a lot, but, and I, they both sound great, but to me, they sound. If there, a lot of them are doing the same, same thing and they're, and they're both so expensive. We have to cut one for a budget.
We would just be paying it in a different place.
Exactly. And there's not really overlap.
Red Comet can't do what Graduation Alliance is doing, doesn't do that.
Can't do our re-engagement. They're not fu-, they're not approved by the state to do the A L E piece, the re-engagement, the right-hand.
And you know, maybe it would be, it would be good to have Val come and talk about Red Comet and why it works for kids. I don't know.
Yeah, any other questions? All right, moving on to the superintendent evaluation process.
As well, as, and Michelle, I sent this to your email.
Yep, they got it. Thanks.
Yep, you've got it. I won't take a lot of time tonight. The first page is, um, my four goals. What I would like from, some feedback for you is. I have things that I've been working under goal one, goal two, three and four. I would like some feedback from you as to what do you think that looks like? I know what I think it looks like, but maybe what your vision of this is, and I'll explain that in a minute. So it just says, um, once my contract came into effect, um, we have. Um, a, I had to prepare what my evaluation was gonna look like, write my goals. These are there for you and this is on the discussion part tonight, cause I'd like to be able to talk about it. Um, and then this document. Um, the, the longer piece is the eight criteria of the A W, uh, the. Losa framework for superintendent evaluations. And the criterion is one is unsatisfactory to four distinguished. Um, and then we will choose as a team, which six of the eight you want to evaluate me on. Um, sometimes as a first-year superintendent, some things may not be as relevant as it would be like your third year, right? So they, we're, our goal is to evaluate six. And then, um, six of the eight, I, I don't care if we evaluate all eight, but I'm just saying, the goal is to evaluate at least six. And then the final page would be what we write on strengths, improvements and our accomplishments. And then that would be the final piece that Jason would submit to all of you at the, um, before June. Um, this was part of the contact negotiation and the, the dates. Um, so going back to the first page, my four goals are open and transparent communication. Accountability for staff and students. Ensuring that school is a safe place for everyone to learn and belong and fiscally responsible decision-making. So I wanna tell you what I think those mean and then I'd like you to challenge me or ask me questions about those. And we can tweak the words, we can think they're too similar, we can do that together. Opening transparent communication, everything from what we're doing here tonight and doing these study sessions that are sometimes a little deeper and more. To the pulse of Prosser, to being seen in the community. Um, responding to parents and student emails, the staff, that type of stuff. That's what I mean by open and transparent communication, admitting when I'm wrong. Admitting when I've made a mistake is another thing that's really important and open and transparent communication. Admitting when I don't know something, I think that's another part is a, as a new superintendent. There is no way I can know it all, right? So you have to be strong enough to say, I don't know, I will research, I will get back, something like that. Um, any questions on that one? Okay. Accountability for staff and students. This goes back to our strategic plan. This goes back to our student handbook. Um, our staff handbook needs some work. Um, this knows is my responsibility to really know the contracts. Right? To really know what's there. And know what we as a board and me as your secretary to the board, know what. We want to look at and look at opening it up at a bargaining. Um, what we want to adjust, how we hold people, are we following due process? Um, are we ho- holding, um, do, uh, following due process for students? Are we holding them accountable? Um, are we holding, we talked about attendance, for example, with the littles. What, or how were the parents being involved in that due process for students? And how do we bring the family entity into that due process? So that's what I mean by accountability. Thoughts on that? Michelle, interrupt. I know it's sometimes hard to put the, push the pause and get the speaker on, but if you have something, please don't hesitate to interrupt.
Yeah, I will. Thanks.
Um, so ensuring that school is a safe place for everyone to learn and belong. Um, this has everything to do from making sure. That the building is safe, literally from locking the doors and safety, like we talked in our security meeting tonight. To safety for crosswalks. To safety and what we dealt with during volleyball with between in athletics, right? This has to do with, um, teacher to student respect, right? Um, respect goes both ways. Um, and so making sure that I'm following through on any concerns, anything that's brought up. This goes to, um, I've been meeting with all of the parents. I'm on parent number five that were concerned about the food service at the middle school. Am I following up? Am I really listening to the community? Does that make sense? Sitting down with them, trying to really find out what it is. Is it a, somebody who's just doesn't like the food and is complaining about it? Or do we really have a problem with the temperature of the food, right? Does that make sense? Like, really getting to it. So us, uh, because if a person doesn't feel like their food is good and whatever and they're hungry. Um, if you think of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? If we aren't, uh, uh, we don't belong and we don't do this, we're not gonna be able to learn. We're not gonna sit for an hour and listen to about algebra if we're tummy's growling. Or if we're worried that somebody's throwing spitwads at the back of our head or whatever it is, it's hard to focus on the piece. So that's what, where that one comes from. That one is the hardest to provide evidence for, by the way. That's the hardest to provide evidence for. So I think that would come from responsiveness to emails and some things like that. Any questions on that one? And fiscally responsible decision-making. Um, as we know, the budget is kind of out of whack, right? And we have a, we have some duty and responsibility. This will be the work that we're doing within the levy and this is the work on facilities management and. Our scope and study for our buildings. This is, are we managing, do we have the right paras and the right buildings? This is a lot of the work that Deanna and I do together. Are, are grants being claimed appropriately? Are we doing the pieces? As much as it's about the bottom line. Obviously, it's to increase the reserve and decrease the difference between income and, and expenditures, right? So that it's, we're spending the money where it should be spent. That is probably the final measure, right? Is the reserve going up or getting better? But it's also fiscally responsible by building. Equitable does not mean equal. So if we have a situation where Housel needs a lot of our money because we need to do the roof and we need to do the security and do whatever. Well, the other four buildings all got a bunch of money spent on them at a different time, so equitable does not mean equal. And that would be some other evidence pieces that would come through in that.
Any question?
Yeah, Kim, I have a question. Um, I see this as just a one-year document, right? Your four goals for this current year.
Uh huh.
The one thing I'm not seeing that I would have liked to see is something related to academic rigor. Is that something you're thinking of in, in future years or is there ways?
Absolutely. Nope, absolutely. We could even write it into long-term goal or, um, a long-term focus. We could do something like that. I think, um, I, I wanna think about experiences that I've had in my life. Um, personally or even professionally in my classroom, Michelle. I can't really focus on the rigor if the boat's not going down the stream in the right direction. And so, um, I think that's very, very true, long-term and that should be. So our next year goal for the twenty-four, twenty-five will include attendance rates, graduation rates, increased test scores. But I gotta get the systems and the processes fixed. So that then I can quit focusing on what form is filled out or what is done and we can really focus on instruction.
And just to add to that, I think, um, as, as we con- conclude this year's evaluation. Prior to the next school year, we'll actually have another meeting where. You know, we, we discussed the goals for the upcoming year that would be put on the shi-, on this sheet that we would evaluate at the end of next year. So this is a continual process. Um, and you know, as we move forward, different things will come up as we set goals, um, you know, for, for Kim, so.
And I think that's a very important part. This is a collaborative process and the board is gonna help me. Drive the district, right? I'm the driver, but you're, you're the one who's pu- putting the wheels on the bus and telling me which way we're going. And then together we do that and I'm successful if I'm accomplishing what the board sets out for me to do. I think because it was the interim and then it came in in the middle, it's a little bit clunky, I guess is what I would call it. Rather than in June, May, June, we start writing the goals for twenty-four, twenty-five. And we write them and this, this document is done before August one, before we start the school year.
Any other questions or comments? Great, thank you, Kim. And if you wanna, um, look this over again and have other additional comments, feel free. Uh, to add to that or.
And then when I meet with you each individually, like I do each month, you can add some things. My goal would be to have, under each of the bottom, um, items would be the list of items that we would consider evidence. For that, right? Like, I'll put a bunch of things in there, but if you think you would like to see something, I would like to. I would like to add them for you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to item number four is program service ag- agreement for Ready for Kindergarten.
And Erin is here, um, to help us out and I, I think already in some of the discussion back and forth, I think there's. Um, something I can probably share, but I think Erin can just talk about the program and you've been doing this for how long?
Uh, for Ready for Kindergarten, six years.
And Ready's been around for?
Over twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, I wanted to kind of present a few things. I know, you know, you've had a long meeting and I can certainly hand out. I sent some emails to Deanna too, to kind of explain the, the program as well and I brought some sample kits. But I know you all were really anxious to see what does it actually look like. Um, so I have that as well. So Ready started about twenty years, I'm used to standing, I'm sorry. It's just easier to present with all the things. Uh, so Ready started, it's interesting that I come and all of the topics you guys are talking about is why Ready even began. So our flagship nationally is in Kennewick School Districts. And the whole reason we started Ready for Kindergarten is due to graduation rates and attendance. So they were finding in the high school level, those things were, were dropping. So they were kind of looking at it from a preventative standpoint and they decided. You know, we need to get on the other end of the spectrum and look at zero to five. And how do we support parents? How do we get them engaged? How do they, how do we get them to play with purpose with their children? How do we get them to read twenty minutes? Um, increase their literacy and, uh, what we found and research has shown is that a lot of kindergartners, when they get to kindergarten. They can have, a teacher can have a three-year range. You have some kids that are at a two-year-old, three-year-old level and some that are at a six or a seven-year-old. Level, all in the same classroom. So we wanna, we wanna make that gap closer, right? And what they found is even though most little ones, most kids make a year jump in any academic year. And what they found is when kids came into kindergarten three years behind, they're still making a year, a year growth. But they're not catching up as we go year after year after year after year. So if they start three years behind, they're gonna, you know, keep going. Some kids can make those huge jumps, but it's rare. Um, the other thing too, to keep in mind is, uh, Ready for Kindergarten, um, you know, we started twenty years ago. But we're having even more success now coming off of COVID. Um, kids were at home, not going to preschool, not, um, having the same support maybe in the home. Uh, for education and so Ready for, this is where Ready for Kindergarten kind of fits in. Um, to give you kind of an example with, at least in the Kennewick School District. Um, I give out two thousand three hundred and fifty kits a year. So I have twenty-five hundred parent participants. Um, that take a Ready workshop. So it is a, a well-loved program, um, when we do present Ready for Kindergarten with families for workshops. Hundred percent said they would recommend it for someone else. I always say, once you're a ready parent, you stay a ready parent. Uh, once you get them engaged, um, they see the value in Ready for Kindergarten. So Ready is based on twenty-six age level targets and I brought our poster if you wanna take a look at it. And it's age level, so.
You, you sent the picture of that, but it was, I couldn't read it.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys could read.
And I can, I can send you a better picture, um, and it's in notebooks and stuff. So these are the twenty-six age level targets from zero to five. And they're all, uh, um, they're based around language and literacy, math and reasoning and social emotional development. And when you talk about social emotional development from zero to five, you're talking about things like relating to others. Uh, increasing their attention span, following directions, taking responsibility and developing, uh, emotional well-being. So I like to think of this as, um, if you're familiar with executive function. Can they handle themselves in the classroom and can they be responsible for themselves? Um, so that's kind of how Ready is laid out and it's based on age. So you have birth one, one, two, two, three, three, four, four, five. And the, all of the targets go all throughout each age, but each age has its own targets and its own tools. So that's why we have, we have three workshops a year for each age level. Because, um, for instance, you would give, uh, two, three, something with letters and alphabet and whatnot. Whereas you would give a one, two, a shape sorter.
So that was one of the things that we were talking about the cost. It's, it's not twenty-five families, it's seventy-five families. Because there's, uh, that, there's three workshops per, at a time with the two different languages. So there's six going on at a time, not, it's not three. So there's like, like she said, there's the zero to one, there's two, the threes that are going on. So I think when, when you're looking at it, it's like, oh wow, this is like a thousand dollars for me. It's not, it's about like three hundred and seventy-five dollars a family. Um, and there is an expense, but there's a big expense when kids aren't ready for kindergarten.
Right.
Way bigger that lasts us way longer, so.
Hey, Deanna, can you, would you mind to explain that one more time? I was, like, I was having a hard time wrapping my mind around that through the emails.
So it's not, um, it's not like three work, it's not three workshops. So you have a group of Spanish and a group of English-speaking parents coming three times. It is, if you have three times, but there's three different groups for English and three different groups of Spanish. So there's seventy-five families at a time in the workshop, not twenty-five.
Right.
Based on age.
Right. Each, so the way I. Time, there's seventy-five.
Yes, so it's, it's th- th- three times as many as we were, when we first talked about it, it's three, it's, it's not one workshop for kids zero to three. It's a three workshops at a time, three times.
Right.
In two languages.
Right. Does that make sense, Michelle?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So like, there's a zero-one workshop, a one-two workshop, and a two-three workshop in both languages. So when we would have a workshop night, we would have three instructors doing the English side and three doing the Spanish.
Will you explain why the group and the Spanish group is smaller than the English group, why we do?
I just, I, and we can kind of play around with that too. Um, at least in the Kennewick community, that's how it played out. Um, we always have less Spanish, but we can certainly look at that.
Less because it's, you need. Let me see.
More support or?
More support, or because fewer attend, is what I guess I'm trying to.
Fewer attend.
Okay. I didn't know if it was they needed, that they need.
Right, we could, whatever, um, if, for instance, um, most of the time when I hire a a Spanish instructor, they're bilingual. So we can really look at who signs up, and then we can plan accordingly.
We wanna hold twenty-five seats, and we put them where.
Right, so I was basing it on the numbers that I have for Kennewick, kind of, I I need to look at Prosser's demographics a little bit, or.
I think it's very likely that we we could have something similar.
Similar.
We would see, yeah.
So I was kind of basing it fifteen per workshop for English and ten per workshop for Spanish. That's how those numbers kind of played out. And then they get, they get three workshops a year. So it's language and literacy is our fall, fall. Um, math and reasoning is our winter, and this social emotional is our spring. Um, Ready is incredibly flexible, especially since COVID. So we've been able to do a lot of different things with the Ready program, and so we can do it a series. So we don't have to stick to the fall, winter, spring, um, which we've talked about because we're kind of January, right? We're coming up on January. We can do. A series where we do January, February, March. We can do. Um, you know, one month and do three workshops. It really varies on how you wanna lay it out.
We talked about too, that we know traditionally, so with with our migrant families and stuff, like in the fall and in the spring, they're working. So we had talked initially even before, like, maybe we should, we would do it kind of in the winter because people are more. Available, not working, you know, those in the, it's not like in the evening, so.
Right.
Could do like a January, February, and try to do all three work.
Right, but we found too, March is really terrible when we've done the spring one. Um, just because of harvest and different things, we've also have to kind of play around with fall. Um, and get a good, good timeframe.
Could you give us an example of what would be in a kit for?
Sure. So first things first, um, they would get their orientation binder, and what I was thinking about for Prosser is I have. E-learning links or whatever, we could send the organization out first. Typically, we'll do a half-hour orientation and then move into the workshop. Um, we can do it either way, but they get an orientation which kind of describes Ready for Kindergarten, why. What's the why behind what we're doing, and kind of explains how the program is laid out. So each family would get a notebook, and it has the different age levels, and it has a ton of different research and information in it. We have Spanish and we have English. So each family would get one of these, and then they would get. The letter and number strip. So, and this is given all throughout all of the workshops, they use this tool. So they'll talk about how to use this in your home and how to how to work with students or your child. Um, with letter and number recognition. And then we have it in Spanish as well. So we have English and Spanish for both those. So that's the first thing they would get. Um, and then I'll give an example. I I just brought like a medley because I wasn't quite sure what you all were kind of looking for, and I. Didn't want to bring all nine because I, that would get overwhelming.
Yeah.
So each parent would get this, which is a packet which has the notes to the workshop. That they'll put in their binder. It's all hole-punched and everything for them. So as, and it's basically a PowerPoint slide. So they would get their notes, that they can take notes during the workshop. And then they get anything else that's mentioned in the workshop, right? So they'll go over everything. These are different variety of tools. That they would receive. And then they get multiple tools that are age-specific. That will go over in the workshop as to how to play with purpose with us, these tools. And then they get two books. So each workshop, they get a variety of different tools, and each one is. There's not a particular brand, right? So it's just a variety of different things based on the target. Um, our national kind of researchers of tools. Um, it could be Melissa and Doug, but that's the one age, zero to one, tools like this. Um, you know, they get a variety of different things, water cups. Things like that. So they each hit typically will come with two or three. Cool items that are discussed all throughout the the workshop. They'll get two books, and then they get all the supplementary. Supplements. Um, documents and like this is a growth chart, this is an age milestone chart, things along that one. Um.
Cups like measuring cups?
Huh?
Are the cups like measuring?
Yeah, and they funnel through.
So they would learn four cups to a, or four quarters cups to a cup?
No. For that. Yeah, there's two, there's two, but you can look at color, you can store, you can. Um, put in, you can talk about all sorts of things. With littles in the water, but some of them, I can handle it. They're kind of fun. We've used different companies with it. Um.
About spatial, or in less.
We encourage parents to have a play with purpose bin to keep that separate. So these aren't tools that you use every day. Um, you kind of, parents. Kind of talk about how to separate it out so the kiddos, this is your special time, this is your time where you work with your. Your child and play with purpose. And I can certainly hear, why don't I?
So you have um on your. That poster, um, that you're holding the second, you had. You had three different series. You had SEL, but I can't, I didn't have.
Math and Reasoning.
Math and Reasoning, Language. Thank you, um. So, just to make sure I get my head around what I'm looking at, we're only gonna offer the SEL version, right?
No, we're not offering SEL. We're only, we were doing the si- the series of three. So the families that sign up would come and do a language of literacy. They would do a math, and they would do a cell. So they would get.
Okay, so we get all three of them?
All three, yeah. So the quote, I mean, this is the way they send it, but the actual bottom, the additional cost for the cell workshop, we're not doing that. We're, we'd only be doing the Ready series that she's talking about, where the parents would come in based on their age and do the three workshops. Yeah.
And we were targeting zero to three.
Yes.
Um, is what that quote at the top is.
And this isn't, this can also be, caregivers can come to this too.
Yes.
It doesn't just have to be parents. So like a daycare provider could come to this too.
We also oftentimes will have a grandparent and maybe watches a child. Um, they've come as well. Um, yeah. So we've had a lot of different caregivers, different people that are involved. Our hope is that anyone that is working with the child. Has, you know, time with the child, that they're all consistently on the same page. That's changing. I know that's a CD. Yeah, it's gonna go to. Do it download.
Say, say, I, you know, I sign up, I have a two-year-old, and my husband are going, but they're all grandma, can all three of them come?
I don't see why not. They probably wouldn't all three get a kit, right?
I think.
Because that's where you're.
Your kit for, yeah.
Right, but you could conceivably have.
It's one kit per family.
Not for age level.
For age level, but if they're all taking care of the same child, the three adults could come and hear what's being.
Absolutely. I don't see why not.
They also would help them learn, like, some of the toys or things they might have at home, or they might purchase, how they could use those.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, some of them are ready specific.
Right.
Nationally, like our, our.
Sure.
Brand, um, things like the the growth chart and a couple other things, but the additional. Um, they can.
Yeah.
Outside. Uh, and then we have instruct. Instructors that would come, and we've been working through, we have a lot of really wonderful Prosser School District employees, kindergartner, transitional K. Teachers that might be interested in in being trained and doing this. So. Um, but typically, we train our facilitators, and we have a rubric for them. Um, they also are given instructor notes. So they almost get a lesson plan, and I can pass this around, I touched it out earlier, yeah. So an instructor, we get a a this before they facilitate, and then it's all, it's a lesson plan even down to the minute. So it kind of gives them with each tool, with each slide, what they would do. And it's completely laid out for them. I mean, we've been for twenty years, and we are a national program, so. Anything, it it's it's laid out pretty smoothly for the facilitators.
And teachers.
And teacher. I mean, they can do this in the dark, probably. It's just, you know, we have. They would need the lesson plan, and they could rock it, you know?
How long is the typical session, workshop session?
So when, prior to COVID, we were kind of doing an hour and a half. Uh, with that half-hour orientation, but we could really. You know, we were talking about an hour, we were talking about an hour and a half. What I found, at least when I was doing in-person and. It's a tough time. Um, families for this age group, they're wanna bath, bed, read a story, go to bed. So I I think we can pair it though. I think we could do an hour really intensive. You know, really dive in. There's some things that we've done in the past that are facilitator things. That you could tone down a little bit and get to the meat and the potatoes of the workshop.
And if a parent wanted to stay and ask questions, they could.
Yeah, and then I think that's the way to go. I'd like to lean more towards practical application. Sometimes with the the Ready workshops, it really depends on your facilitator. You know, and how they get the parents talking. A lot of it is parent engagement. So what the beauty of being in the in-person workshops is parents start talking to each other, ideas are being um shared. And then you've got them, you've got them engaged, they have this community, the Ready community. And then they see that each other the next time, and then they see it the next time, right? So. It just increases uh their engagement with the process of learning. I think. At least this, you know, you have young parents that. Aren't encouraged, and our society certainly isn't encouraging um the same things that. Like when I was raising my kids about, you know, what to expect when you're expecting, all of those things. And I think sometimes parents just don't know. They don't know they're supposed to, you know, read with their baby. They don't know, how can I use the cups to do these things? And I think if you increase the engagement zero to five. The attendance, the graduation rate, all of those things come. Um, and you can certainly check our website. There's a couple studies on this, uh, Kennewick cannot, yeah. Uh, Kennewick and Offelo did a study, WSU did a study um with Ready. And we can look at it with prostitute. We've already talked about how. The data wouldn't flush out for a while, but we could certainly work on how to do the data. To see, hey, for the parents that went to the Ready workshop, did, was there value? In their walk kids or their kindergarten stuff.
Uh, if I remember, you said. Typically, we're passing out two thousand thirty-five kids in Kennewick?
Yeah, we do two thousand three hundred and fifty.
Yeah, you're like, what percent?
So they used to in Kennewick, they used to have a question on the kindergarten registration, a yes or no, did you attend a Ready workshop? Um, they have since taken that off with COVID. So the last couple of years, I don't have that data. Um, there's now gonna put it back in. Um, personally, and since I took the program, it's really taken off. We've done a lot of marketing. We've done a lot of different connections with our community partners. Uh, which has helped.
I'm just still, I'm not saying thi- this is great stuff. I just, I guess. Still trying to wrap my head around just parenting side of this. Like, are we honestly to that, to this point? Like, I, I mean, we have grandkids, and this is all stuff you see at the, at at the house. Like, are we honestly to that point where?
Yes.
People are like.
Yes.
Seriously.
Yes.
We, we have, you have kids that don't really even have books in their home.
Yes. I mean, I'm part of the Children's Reading Foundation in Columbia, and we give out free books all over the place, and you would be surprised. You would be surprised that kids don't even have libraries at home, they're not reading at home. And recently, we have heard from kindergarten teachers, um, and you can either back this up, that. Um, one of the things I'm getting with national about is trying to put some um. Hygiene and toileting into some of our Ready workshops, because what they're coming to kindergarten, not being fully potty-trained.
We, we've had some kids.
Yeah, and that's increased.
And we're not talking, and it's not necessarily kids that are, you know, might have a a reason, a physical reason, but, but, yes.
Yeah.
Erin, would you, thank you, by the way, for all that you've presented and shared so far. I I have a couple of questions, um. I'll give them both to you, and if you, there're just two, but if you forget the second one, I'll repeat it. So, um. I was reading the studies that you mentioned that were on the website, and granted, they're a little bit dated. But there was a couple of things that stuck out to me in relation to our community. So one was. The study couldn't really determine. If the results seen by the Ready program. Were really because of the program or kind of because of self-selection, right? The parents who attend these programs are the ones who are already interested in getting their kids ready. And they're motivated to learn tools. Um, so I I was just wondering, like. For our parents who aren't really motivated to get their kindergartners, or their kids ready for kindergarten, kindergarten. How this program works for them. And then the second statistic. That I read was that it didn't seem to have much of an effect on our English language learners, which we have a lot of. So could you talk about those two aspects of the studies?
Sure, and I, again, I'm not part of the the national. I mean, I'm a license agreement, but it, you know, I can speak to my experience with Kennewick. So one of the things that at least I've done the last six years is you try to partner with the right, um. We kind of have some targets in mind as to what, what demographic or population that we're gonna try and get ready parents to. So a lot of it has to do with the marketing um aspect of it. And I know Deanna and I talked about working hand-in-hand with the. The migrant program that you all have, um, and those people. So you. The ones that are already outreach to to potentially at-risk families. So a lot of it has to do with who you partner with and how to get them engaged in the process. Um, it really takes a community outreach. Um, walking hand-in-hand with parents and being nonjudgmental and. Expressing the value of what we're doing. Um, in terms of the studies, they are dated. I know our national organization is looking at doing some more study. There. There's some studies going on currently that just haven't been flushed out completely. Um, at least that's what I've done in Kennewick. So for Kennewick, our data. Is what I try to do, and especially as a nonprofit, you try to be reflective of the community in which you serve. So um, in our evaluation process, so at the end of the workshop, in the note is a um. An evaluation that families do, and we can pull some data from that. So. Uh, in Kennewick, I pulled some demographic data, so I can look at the end result, parents answer the evaluation, I can look at. Am I reaching the families that I'm hoping to reach? And there's some socioeconomic data in there too. Of course, that's all optional for parents to submit, but most parents do. Um, you know, they're doing out the evaluation, how is my facilitator, and they end up filling out the rest. So it really is going to take just outreach and working with the right people in the school districts to get the message across. And to get it advertised in the right places. Um, to get our families, but.
And two things. I I believe the majority of our parents do the best they can with what they know.
Yes.
And so there's a, this was um happened several years ago at River View. Um, River View used to do um, kind of this, this, do a screening thing beforehand. They were kind of doing walk kids before school starts, and you're not supposed to, you're supposed to do it when school start. So they were doing this before school started, and this, they had done the screening, they were, and then they sit down, and they tell the parents, like, this is how your child did. Mom comes, a good screen, mom's sitting down. They tell the mom, your child's not ready for Kinder, they, you know, these are the areas, you know, explain this to the mom. Mom sits there, mom stands up, walks a couple steps, and turns and comes back and says. What do you mean, my, my child's aren't ready for Kinder? So sometimes, some parents, um, sometimes it's like. I'm gonna send them to school, and they're gonna learn what they need to learn when they get to school.
Absolutely.
Not realizing, not knowing or understanding, and some of it's cultural too, like, there are certain cultures, like. Parents talk, adults talk to adults, and kids talk to kids, and they, you know, kind of do their thing. So it is. This mom was like so taken aback because she did not. this mom was like so taken aback because she did not know that there were things that she should have done to help, that the thing that, that, that this child was. How could I, my child be behind, they're just starting school, they even went to school, how are you behind, you haven't even started school? So, a part of our job, and that's what part of this is, it's all, you know, we talked about the preschools and helping, you know, childcare providers know, uh, know what they need to do to help kids and so we have lots of kids that can do these things, but they maybe haven't been exposed to it. And so as a district, we can also target our families, we can target our populations where they, the kids might come in with more challenges, language diff- you know, they might come in with some language challenges. They might come in, you know, we have, this is a partnership, part of the funding for this is coming out of our migrant um, funding and part out of Title One because, you know, we're trying to target populations that need that help and support to know what they need to do with their kids, because I think when parents know better, they'll do better.
And we, you mentioned Maslow's hierarchical of needs, right? If it, you know, a lot of parents are working on that basic. We're, we're trying to have a roof over our heads, we're trying to get our children fed, I'm, I have, I'm working two jobs. So it's not necessarily that, you know, most parents want to be active proactive parents. I think they're just at this part and you have to kind of encourage cheerlead, be their biggest fans, you know, you are your child's most influential teacher. Get them amped up about their role as parent even through the zero to five. And if you, if you choose the right facilitators and choose your right, the way you're outreach, you can do this. We do this in Kennewick, I have a great outreach coordinator, um, and she's bilingual and she really gets the parents involved and excited about what we're doing. For every tool you see, there's probably seven activities that are mentioned in a workshop to achieve some of these goals and targets, so they look like simple things, but they're, they're targeted to different targets. Um, and so I think, you know, when you, I think it's all in how you, um, get out there in your community, know your community well and know what families to really get out there and introduce this to. Um, that really affects your success, at least in Kennewick, I'm about, I'm, when I do the demographic information, um, I am even up with the demographics of Kennewick. So it matches, um, but again, I have different community partnerships, uh, with the refugee and immigrant, um, community and the, um, we have some dual language schools and things like that. So it's, it's all in how you get your tentacles out in how you get to parents. And you figure out where, where they are, where, where do they go, how do they communicate, whether that's playgroups, preschools, churches, um, hospitals, all of that is how you kind of can get the word out to families. Michelle, I hope I answered.
You did, no, and Deanna, I appreciate that perspective about, you know, the mom who just for the first time finds out that her kid isn't ready because they thought, well, isn't that what kindergarten's for? Um, and just kind of brought me back to like when my first child was in preschool and I think, you know, thank goodness for a preschool teacher informing me that like, no, they're supposed to know some things before they go, right? And not everyone has that experience to go to preschool and have a teacher tell them no, they're actually supposed to already know like the days of the week and the letters and the numbers, right? Um, so that is, that's great perspective, I do have a question for you, do we know that we can fill these sessions, like, will, will we have seventy-five families?
I mean, that's, that's the hope, but again, the, um, you can look at the contracts a little bit more, my the way we kind of form our contracts is you get kind of some of the startup money and then we bill you for what we actually use. So I'm not billing you, I, I, one fell swoop, um, so we can look at, you know, where we're gonna where we can improve between the first session and second session, where we, you know, and see if we can build momentum um, as we go.
I, I think we can find them.
I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can.
That's gonna be our work here, um, but I think we can find them.
What's your attendance from session to session like?
So we hound them, we do, and so that's we give constant reminders, we call them physically, you know, we say, hey, the session's coming up. So we really, if they start with us in that fall session, they see the value and they stay all the way through.
Because they have, they have to come for all three.
Yeah.
No, but you don't have someone come and fill in in the second. I think, I think it's feeling, I think it's seeing the, the value.
Value of it.
Is what the.
I mean, and like I said, once they, it, it's getting them in the door. Once I can, once we can get them in the door, most ready parents stay ready parents and they will go to all three. Or they'll, at least husband or wife will go, or grandma will go. They will see the value if they follow what the ready program lays out for them. You're gonna have families that don't and they're gonna look at it as free tool, toys and off they go. Um, you can't, right? That's just life. Um, but your hope is if you make the right connections and they see that friendly face, that facilitator is really good that you're getting that warm environment that parents are sharing. Um, some of them describe it as a relief, right? They don't have that community anywhere else because they are working, they're not, um, doing the playgroups and stuff, so it becomes this somewhat parent exchange, um, if you have the right facilitator and create that environment. Any other questions? I'm open to answer any of your questions, you all have my email, I know, you know, there's no decision to be had, you guys need to talk about it, but um, at any point, ask me any questions.
The zero to five. It kind of goes back to, uh, comment Deanna made about getting your updates about your infants and what they should be doing, like can we like stick those in parents' bags as their kids are born, they're leaving the hospital, I mean. Is there something with Mid County, Yakima County to where?
Yes.
Parents are getting this stuff?
Yes, so we do a program called Book, the Children's Reading Foundation, I'll put on my other hat. Uh, we do a program called Books for Babies, and so the age, uh, parent that has a child, they'll get a baby book and they get the ready information in that. Um, Kennewick can.
In multiple languages too?
Yes, it's front to back.
Okay.
Um, and Pass, uh, Pasco and Kennewick offer the Ready for Kindergarten Program. So if, if we were to do this, we could even go to Prosser, you know, the thing is, is that the maternity, I don't think Prosser does, does families that have babies in Prosser, it's Prosser Hospital, or do they go to Catholic sometimes?
I, I, there's, there's plenty of babies born here.
Okay.
Um, and some might be Grandview or Sunny Side too, but I've actually talked to the hospital and the library and they're willing to partner as well to have stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we can talk for the Children's Reading Foundation too, to see about giving the.
I think we have resources through our local, um, DSHS offices and our low-income housing and we have.
So we have a, we have a partnership with WIC and so we, we set up a table ready with WIC on the days that they have the parents come in and our outreach, we talk to families and get them set up. So there's lots of different ways you can, yeah, get out there.
Well, Erin, thank you, I appreciate you coming here. Thank you for bringing all the, the show, the show and tell.
So I have to say something, I didn't bring it because we, our fall session was so good that I don't have any inventory. Uh, the shape sorter, it's this elephant shape sorter and we bring it to open houses um, across K through five, right, uh, as we're, and fifth graders will come to that shape sorter. You know, and be at the table and doing, yeah, so it's a lot of the tools the kids love. Thank you so much, yeah.
So that does it for the agenda tonight. Um, we do have a regular board meeting on December twenty-seventh, uh, right here at six P M. Um, and with that, uh, wish y'all a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.